Pursuant to Section eighty-four dash fourteen eleven of the Nebraska statutes, notice of this meeting was given on December thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. The meeting will convene at six o'clock P. M. and visitors may obtain a request to be heard form from staff or any presentation they may have for the meeting. In accordance with the policy, the requests to be heard forms must be submitted to the secretary within the first five minutes of the board meeting in order to be heard at this meeting. Agenda items are subject to reordering at the discretion of the Board President. Please attend the entire meeting to ensure you are able to hear any discussion. Pursuant to Section eighty-four dash fourteen eleven of the Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education of Douglas County School District zero 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 one and the Board of Educational Service Unit number nineteen will be held on Wednesday, January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three, at six o'clock P. M. in the Board Meeting Room of the Teacher Administrative Center, thirty-two fifteen Coming Street. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the Administrative Building during regular working hours. Pursuant to Section eighty-four dash fourteen twelve of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that our current copy of the Nebraska Open Meeting Act is posted in the Board Meeting Room on the North Wall. Please stand and join us for the Presentation of Colors and Pledge of Allegiance led by Benson High School's J. R. O. T. C.
Forward. Arm. Color. Hold. Up. The color. Reason. Arm.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order. Arm. Center. Ape. Over. Arm.
You may be seated. Before we begin, I just want to make sure that we're good to go with streaming. Great, thank you so much. Vice President Erdnberger will lead us in the O. P. S. vision and mission statement.
Thank you, President Holman. You can follow along on the agenda. The O. P. S. vision is every student, every day, prepared for success. And the mission is to prepare all students for success in college, career, and life.
Sorry for the delay, just a little mix up with our agenda. Next, we're going to move to the oath of our newest board member, Ms. Bree Fuller. Bree, if you want to go ahead and stand and commence with the oath for your participation in election on the Omaha Public Schools Board of Education.
Yes. Do I need to raise my right hand or anything? Okay. I, Bree Full, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Nebraska against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same, that I will take this obligation freely and without mental reservation or for the purpose of evasion, and that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of the office of Member of the Board of Education according to law and to the best of my ability. And I do further swear that I do not advocate, nor am I a member of any political party or organization that advocates the overthrow of the government of the United States or of this state by force or violence, and that such and that during such time as I am in this position, I will not advocate nor become a member of any political party or organization that advocates the overthrow of the government of the United States or of the state by force or violence. So help me God.
Let's go ahead and give a warm welcome to our newest board member, Ms. Bree Fuller. Welcome, and you had a few words that you wanted to share.
Yes, just a few brief remarks. First and foremost, I would just love to thank everyone who helped me get to this point, a lot of whom are sitting in this room, my friends, my family, my campaign staff, the voters. You know, I ran to make a difference, and I would not have run for this position if I truly did not believe that I can make positive changes for my community in this position. I believe that I have an obligation to the community. I answer to my constituents and my constituents only, and I want to use this platform to voice what they think, what they need, and what they want. I'll just briefly go over some of the priorities that I want to focus on in my tenure as a school board member, and that is to make up for the learning loss during COVID, addressing student behavior in the classroom, decreasing disparities in learning outcomes specifically for students who are minorities and students who live with a disability. Last but certainly not least, the staffing shortage across the district. We know that change can be uncomfortable, but it is necessary, and it is the only consonant that we have in this life. And I will end by saying my life mantra, my personal mantra that I live by every day, and that is that change is scary, but so is staying the same. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, moving on now to roll call. Mr. Wright.
Cassidy.
Here.
Erdnberger.
Here.
Full.
Here.
Head.
Present.
Holman.
Present.
Juarez.
Here.
Cracky.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Thielen.
Here.
Nine present.
Moving on now to Board and Superintendent Communications, Dr. Logan. Excuse me, I'm sorry, Mr. Ryan, I apologize, Mr. Ryan.
President Dr. Holman, Vice President Erdnberger, members of the Board, and Superintendent Dr. Logan, the financial statements for the period ended November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, have been finalized and submitted for your review. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Dr. Logan.
Good evening, President Holman, Vice President Erdnberger, members of the Board, those here in attendance and watching from home. I'd like to begin by welcoming Ms. Bree Full to our Board of Education, having just taken the oath of office this evening. We appreciate the service of our board members. There is joy in serving our young people as we confront challenges and embrace opportunities together. Omaha Public Schools is essential to our city, our state, and the future of both. Looking ahead, I've shared with the Board of Education and our community that this will be my final year with the Omaha Public Schools. I will step away from the superintendency in June. I was appointed, I was selected five years, five years ago this month. I was sitting right in the middle of that room, and I, I won't forget what that felt like. And I would say that what I've said about the superintendency, and I told people that I, I'm not going to be a superintendent again. I have enjoyed my five years in the superintendency, but it is like a marriage. You have to meet the in-laws and the outlaws. The difference is that the outlaws are wanted. Sorry, I, I was waiting all day to tell that joke. But sitting here today in the same dress that I wore on that night, and I, I really believe in symbolism, I am humbled to have had the opportunity to serve this beautiful community. I say all the time that the Omaha Public Schools is not a good school system. It's a great school system. We do outcomes and do things for children that no one else does in the state of Nebraska. During the winter break, we had more than one apartment complex that was impacted by poor conditions, weather, all kinds of different things. Staff did not hesitate to come in to make sure that children and their families had everything that they needed, and they worked with many of you in the community as well to do that. Transportation was in to make sure that students would be routed when they returned to school this past Tuesday. So I, I could not have landed in a sweeter spot, and I'm very grateful for the, my selection by the Board of Education, and I'm very excited about moving back to be with my family, who I, I love, and wanted me to tell you all that you all have had me long enough. So I, I am committed, though, to a strong finish to school year and fostering a very smooth transition. Achieving the measurable goals outlined in our strategic plan of action remained the focus through three disrupted school years and will remain the focus from, for the time to come. Being the superintendent is a very difficult job. Most people don't understand it. They have a lot of opinions about it, just like they have opinions about the quarterback on Sunday. But what I can tell you is that no decisions that I made during, during my time here were made with me in mind. They were made with the fifty-two thousand plus students that I served, plus eight thousand staff, families, community, and many others. And so I look forward to a strong finish. I was with the Sherman Sharks today and the Burke Bulldogs, and it was every time I'm with children, which is pretty much every day, it reminds me of the mission. One can see from the signage here in the boardroom that investing in staff is a key priority in our strategic plan. We met with our new student teachers last evening, or two evenings ago, and they're cooperating teachers, and we'll meet with them again tomorrow. Omaha Public Schools has led the way with support for student teachers, and we are seeing the benefits. Of the student teachers who joined us last semester, approximately forty started this week as full-time educators in our school district. This semester, we welcome a hundred and forty new student teachers in Omaha Public Schools. I enjoyed visiting them with the welcome reception. Thank you to our student teachers for joining the Omaha Public Schools, to our Board of Education for the resources to implement this initiative, and our human resources team for managing the growing program. Two reminders for our families now. The start of a new semester and new year is a natural time to access tutoring, which is available across our district. Our Board and community may recall the presentation at the November fourteenth meeting. It outlined the student voice and data that informed how we deliver this service. It's one way we are targeting, targeting federal ESER funds towards academic recovery. Students may join tutoring in person or online. We communicated information directly with all families and featured tutoring services in, and inside O. P. S. If you are interested in tutoring for your student, your school's main office is ready to help. After two one-stop family engagement events in December, in December, this month begins the next phase of our school selection process. Middle and high schools are hosting individual open houses. I know we have the Central Eagles, and I believe theirs is on Saturday. Do I have that correct? Yes, so I don't, I just got, I got lucky. I, I thought I had committed it to memory. It offers families an in-depth look at each school they may be considering. As Nebraska's largest school district, we stand on our own with the opportunities we offer young people. Visit ops.org/schoolselection for complete details and a schedule. Kindergarten roundup events are also happening soon. Those dates and times are all on our website with information about who is eligible to begin in August. Finally, congratulations are in order for all of the Omaha Public Schools students who received N. S. A. A. and N. C. P. A. Academic All-State Awards, seventy-five students in total, and Kendall Lewis of Norris Middle and formerly Castalar Elementary, who was named the two thousand twenty-two Outstanding Teacher by the Nebraska State Council for Social Studies. I enjoyed visiting with, with Mr. Lewis, I'm sorry, I got that wrong, it's Mr. Lewis, and his fellow launch leadership program participants at their meeting on December the nineteenth. So he is training to be a future administrator and leader in our school district. So that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Logan. And typically, I call on my colleagues for board comments next, but I'm going to hop in. I have, I have to write it down just so I can make sure that I have everything that I need to, to say, so if you can just bear with me for a second. As we all know, is Dr. Logan will be transitioning out as our superintendent June thirtieth, and we will be in the process of searching for our next superintendent for the Omaha Public Schools. Again, welcome to our newest board member, Ms. Bree Full, and we are so excited to support your work on the Board of Education for all fifty-two thousand students that we serve here. We are united by organizational values, focusing work through our strategic plan of action and delivering the portrait of an Omaha Public Schools graduate from early childhood through graduation and beyond. And since this is our first board meeting after Dr. Logan's December announcement, I wanted to echo the letter that I shared with all staff and families. Through historic challenges, Dr. Logan's steady leadership maintained a laser focus on our people, the students we serve, and our staff who make it happen every single day. Our strategic plan of action invests in early literacy, expanding access to high-quality programming, and developing staff pipelines for the future. These efforts benefit students through their entire journey with us. Seeing Dr. Logan, seeing Dr. Logan's letter resignation on the agenda tonight brings many emotions. Sadness that your time in the Omaha Public Schools will conclude in June. Sorry, I'm getting just a little bit emotional. Gratitude for the work that we've accomplished together, and our personal happiness for you knowing that you returned to the loved ones back east. Dr. Logan, I know you'll be with us through June, and I just want to make sure that we all thank you from the bottom of our hearts for your service to our students, staff, and families of the Omaha Public Schools. Looking to the future, Omaha Public Schools will continue to lead. Our strategic plan of action focuses on the work. Our values guide how we accomplish it. For our staff, families, and the Omaha community, another agenda item this evening begins to work to identify our next superintendent. Item J. Nineteen invites superintendent search firms to share their qualifications with our district for consideration. Responses by interested search firms are due in a month, and after, throughout deliberation, this board tentatively plans to select a search firm in March. We each care so much about our students, staff, and families who make up this exceptional district community. Welcoming a new board member and with board officer elections later this evening, we'll share more on the search process as key dates in the time to come. On a personal note, since we are discussing, discussing elections this evening, after two years of being Board President, I have also decided to step aside and not standing for reelection as an officer this evening. Beginning a new term with the sub-district four, I will gratefully remain on our board and will fully support the work to come. Thank you to all of my board colleagues, our staff, students, families, and community for the honor and opportunity to serve in this role for two years. The election of board officers and further discussion about that process will be later on tonight's agenda. While new board leadership will carry this forward, we are united in our commitment to Omaha Public Schools through this transition. As a large urban school district, we are extremely unique. We serve ten thousand more students than Nebraska's next largest school, school district. We provide one-of-a-kind opportunities for students across more than one hundred schools and programs, and we are a major employer and economic driver in our city and state. With that in mind, our superintendent search process may look different than those of our neighbors, and that's absolutely okay. This is a vitally important process, which our Board of Education takes most seriously. We value open communication, and the latest information straight from our school district will be posted to ops.org/superintendentsearch. With that, best to all of my colleagues who will be running tonight for board leadership positions. I know that we will be in great hands moving forward, and I look forward to the rest of our semesters with Dr. Logan serving as our superintendent, and I also looking forward to this process moving forward. Colleagues, anyone got remarks? Mr. Thielen?
Thank you, Dr. Holman. First, I'd like to welcome our new colleague, Bree Full. In my few brief meetings with her, I've found her thoughtful and eager to roll up her sleeves. We've got many challenges ahead, and I look forward to working on forging that path forward with you. A constituent recently asked me about Dr. Logan's legacy, and as I started to write something similar to what Dr. Holman said tonight, I realized it's too early for legacy. We'll get there, but tonight, I just want to say thank you for the grace with which you've handled this transition, and I look forward to working with you for the next six months. We are, however, taking an important step tonight in finding a replacement, a process important to our district, our city, and our state, and I look forward to seeing the responses to our requests for quotes for search firms that'll assist us in that process. Finally, I want to thank Dr. Holman for her leadership of the Board over the last two years. She's been instrumental in helping to shape better norms, higher expectations, and a more collegial Board. She's worked tirelessly to represent O. P. S. across the state and across the nation to tell the story of our successes and to keep us keyed into the state of education in our fellow school districts. She's been a welcoming leader. It's always made time to talk with an open mind, so I really appreciate your leadership. Thank you, Dr. Holman.
Mr. Head.
Thank you, President Dr. Holman, and I, I just wanted to briefly echo your comments as well as, as well as Mr. Thielen's. And Dr. Logan, thank you for your service to the district. I know it's, we, we had a conversation after you let us know that you were going to be resigning, and, and, you know, I'd said it's, it's often lonely at the top, and you catch a lot of arrows, whether they're deserved or not, and it's, it's not exactly the best place to be, but I, I truly appreciate your service to the district, and thank you for, for the time that you've given us, and, and wish you the best in your future. and wish you the best in your future endeavors. Dr. Holman, I've appreciated the opportunity to work with you, your leadership the past two years. I know I've learned a lot from you. You were assigned as my board mentor when we came on, and so we had a lot of conversations, and we've had a lot of back and forth, and I've really appreciated the opportunity. I think I've grown significantly, not just as a board member, but as a person, because of those relationships and because of our interactions that we've had. And Mrs. Erdenberger, thank you for your service and leadership on the board as well. I greatly appreciate that. So thank you all.
Ms. Cassidy?
Thank you, Dr. Holman. So I'm not going to say goodbye yet. Sorry, I'm not going to echo that because you're here till June, and we're going to get every ounce of work out of you we can. June thirtieth. No, but in all seriousness, we have a lot of work to do as a board. So roll up your sleeves, colleagues. It's going to be quite a ride, but we are up for the challenge. And Ms. Foal, get ready. We'll bring you along. But again, just wanted to kind of, as we do embark on lots of change coming up, do want to take a moment, though, to thank President Holman for sure. I've been on the board now for a while, and I've seen a few different presidents, and I know firsthand the work that you put in to be our president the last two years, and it's a huge commitment that I don't know if the public knows or even some of the other board members that have not been in leadership roles. But I've seen it. I've seen it. You've been on several of my committees, and I often wonder how you juggle everything. So I do appreciate your leadership. You've done a lot of innovative things within your presidency that hopefully will continue. We've made a lot of really good changes with things that have to happen on the board, and I know that you've been instrumental in a lot of them, so thank you. And also to Ms. Erdenberger, thank you for a vice president spot. I don't know what will happen tonight with elections, but thank you both for your service. I think you both were two years, correct? Yes, so thank you both. And again, get ready, welcome, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Vice President Erdenberger?
Thank you, Dr. Holman. Following in the footsteps of my colleagues, I did want to note that the second item on the consent agenda is the acceptance of Dr. Logan's letter of resignation. I checked and double-checked, but there is no Robert's Rules of Order option for reluctantly. Yes, so I guess we will have to just vote yes. The work you have done and the grace you have displayed has been remarkable, and we have no choice but to accept your resignation reluctantly. But as Ms. Cassidy said, we expect to reap the benefit of your leadership till midnight June thirtieth. I'm just saying. You didn't specify in the letter, did you? And while I'm at it, I also wanted to say thank you to Dr. Holman. We were uniquely lucky to have her be our president. Her background as a teacher, a principal, a professor of education administration, and having served two terms as vice president, put her in a position to be a remarkable president. She used all of those skills to build consensus among the board members to create productive partnerships with administration. And as Nick alluded to, she has spent more time, I was going to say on airplanes, but it's probably in waiting rooms in airports, the way it usually goes, traveling the country, participating in national organizations, and representing OPS in a way that is phenomenal and has really raised our status at the national level. And that's been remarkable, considering that she has a job in Lincoln, and as Tracy said, we're not sure quite how she juggled it. As a point of personal privilege, thank you very much for sharing your precious time to lead the board and to mentor me as vice president for the past two years. It's been an honor. Thank you very much.
Alrighty. Well, thank you, everybody, for the very nice comments. I'm very appreciative and look forward to still serving alongside you all and moving forward with the work that we have to do. Next on the agenda for tonight is public comment. Tonight, we have fourteen speakers. It's been a very long time since we've had this many speakers, so I'm excited to have everybody here tonight at our meeting. The board has adopted policy eighty. All right, sorry. We are going to make a quick change in our agenda tonight just because we do have students that are with us tonight that will be presenting, and we want to make sure that they have an opportunity to speak since we have a large number of speakers here tonight who you all graciously come to spend your time with us. And so we're going to allow our students to come and speak, which is on the agenda. Let me find it. Item K-2A, College and Career Academies and Pathways update from our Central High students. And tonight, we have Ms. Christopherson here along with our students and some staff members from Omaha Central High School.
I do.
Come on up.
Come on up.
Principal Kirksey is here. Welcome, welcome, welcome.
All right. Good evening, President Dr. Holman, Vice President Erdenberger, Dr. Logan, Board of Education, and our community. Tonight, we have the opportunity for Central High School to share an update on the quality of work and experiences occurring supporting the phased-in approach of our College and Career Academies and Pathways. It is with great pleasure that I introduce Ms. Dion Kirksey, principal of Central High School, who will begin the presentation and introduce the entire Central High team here with us this evening. And with that, Ms. Kirksey.
Hello, welcome, Ms. Kirksey.
Thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Dion Kirksey. I am the principal of Central High. We are here tonight to showcase and share our pathway advisory committee work with you. Speaking with me tonight are Danielle Brandt, Assistant Principal, Dr. Christy Flaherty-Colling, Pathway Coordinator, Joshua King, CHS IB Student and Freshman Academy Board Member, and Chris Poor, Pathway Advisory Committee Chair and Information Service Manager at Mutual of Omaha. Jody Dirks, Assistant Principal, and Sherri Herrick of the Counseling Department will join us to answer questions if you have any. We are providing you a few items to represent our freshman academy as well. In addition to our freshman academy, at Central High School, we have sixteen pathways as well as an IB pathway, and they are organized into three main focus areas that are STEM, Leadership and Global Studies, and Global Arts. Our current freshman students just selected their pathways for next year, and they all received a sticker similar to "I Have Voted" sticker to start building a sense of connection and community to pathways. You will be receiving one of those stickers in a bundle you receive. Dani Brandt and Joshua King are now going to talk to you about our freshman academy.
Hello, board members. One component of our College and Career Academies and Pathways that we're very proud of at Central High School would be our freshman academy. Last year, we started the freshman academy journey, and we identified a number of teachers who we felt would be a great fit for that component of the program as we got started. Our teachers are invested. They are committing to helping our ninth-grade students transition from middle school to high school. After a bit, we're going to give you some letters that they have written to you, and you are going to find that these student letters that they've written really speak to a common thread of value, support, and just genuine care that their teachers show for all of them. So we have four teams at Central, and our teams are on the board. You will notice that each team has been uniquely included in our central logo to give each team a sense of identity and connectedness to one another while staying united to us as a school as a whole. When we started this journey, we tasked our freshman academy teachers with naming the teams themselves. The parameters that we set forth for them were that we needed to have a meaningful name to this team. And so we came up with the idea of how about we name our four teams after a CHS alum and Hall of Fame member so that we could honor our history and tradition as we propel students forward to be successful, and we can kind of bridge all of it and bring it together as a community. So the teachers went, and they spent some time at a freshman academy kickoff seminar that we had for them, and they perused our wall of fame, and then they were choosing people who they felt had qualities that possessed characteristics they would want students on their team to possess. So the names that were decided upon for our teams were McLaren and Crandall, Sayers, and Townsend. And the connections to those namesakes just flourished from the moment we made them. So our students have had the opportunity to personally meet, speak to, hear from, shake hands with, high-five, fist bump Hollywood actors on McLaren. They have met with football legend Roger Sayers' family when we dedicated the statue at our building. Dr. Townsend's daughter was found through a social media search by one of our teachers. She has come and spoke to our students. And so they really have had an opportunity to truly just bridge the past with the current, and it's been a really uniting opportunity. We have a freshman academy cup going on. It's a friendly little competition among our teams to encourage school spirit, academic growth, and team unity. All of our students receive CHS t-shirts so they can feel connected to our school. They have team-branded items like what you see on the board. Our kids attend college visits. Our teachers meet weekly with one another on a team to discuss how to best support the students on their team. We also have a freshman academy board that helped us kick off a peer mentoring program in our building. It was the vision of the freshman academy advisory board, and we were able to put that into fruition last year and keep it going this year. We are able to have two brilliant, invested, civic-minded, intelligent, kind, I could go on and on, students who lend their voice, their experience, and their insight to that board. And with us here tonight is Joshua King. He is going to be able to speak to you about his experience on our advisory board as well as how he's been able to unofficially participate in a pathway at Central High School. He is a senior, so he was participating in a marketing pathway unofficially before the College and Career Academies and Pathways were officially adopted. But he wants to be able to talk to you about what that experience was like for him. So Joshua, you're that brilliant one we're talking about, and the floor is yours.
Hello, I'm Joshua King, a current senior at Omaha Central, and it has been a pleasure to be able to serve on the freshman academy board. The freshman academy board is helping freshmen already in the school and coming into the school become leaders for today and tomorrow. We've been able to help people with academics, behavior, and community. With academics, we've already been helping students with bringing in new ways of understanding your academics, making it fun in the classroom, but also interactive. We've been having different opportunities for kids to interact and get different prizes and different things such as that. They've been given the opportunity to learn about ways to improve behavior because over time, over COVID, a lot of things with behavior has diminished. But over time, Omaha Central is continuously, and OPS has continuously helped students grow in their behavior. We've also helped push for community. Within our community, we've been great. We've helped with downtown cleanup. We've helped around the school, and we've helped with Rock the Block and so many other opportunities. And we want to give our freshmen the same opportunities. So we've been speaking about Students for Sustainability, which helps Carter Lake clean up and help keep Omaha beautiful. Also, Rock the Block, as I said, which helps families that can't provide for themselves clean houses and be able to clean the front yards in paint. We've also talked about shadowing opportunities for students in different pathways. For example, I am not officially in a pathway, but I was given the opportunity to shadow at Hewitt for the business administration and management because I was able to communicate and network with different people such as that. We want to mentor and help the freshmen for the next step, and there are so many different opportunities that will be placed. Also, as I said, I'm not officially in the pathway, but I've been in two different pathways indirectly. The IB Diploma Program, which helps students at the next level be able to go to college anywhere they want, in London, Oxford, wherever you want to go. And also, I've been able to be blessed with the opportunity to be in the Business Marketing pathway. Within that pathway, I've been able to be in DECA. Though it is my first year in DECA, I've already placed second in the Fall Invite in Business Management and have went to Milwaukee to compete against thousands of kids from all over the Midwest. And out of the three OPS students that I've placed, I was one of them in Business Management. And you want to know one thing as well? All the people that have placed there were all from Omaha Central High School. No other OPS school has placed except Omaha Central. So it has been a blessing to be able to be taught by Ms. Kavanaugh, Ms. Sworson, and the great business department. And I love the administration at Omaha Central, and I thank you all for listening, and I will pass this over to Dr. Flaherty-Colling. Thank you.
It's tough to follow him. So as Joshua mentioned, we have a freshman academy board, and we also have a pathways advisory committee. And one of the priorities of getting the community involved was creating a sense of community within our school for the members who were joining us and committing their time and energy and efforts and expertise. And so when we started this work, we began before they ever entered into the building, brainstorming who would best support the programs that we were bringing in. And it was remarkable how quickly community members raised their hand and offered to help and how quickly they engaged with what we were doing. So in terms of our priorities, we wanted to make sure that the committee's members felt welcomed, and they felt appreciated and feel appreciated every single time they come in. We wanted to make sure that they had a foundational understanding of Central's over one hundred and fifty years of tradition and its culture and our aspirations for our students. We wanted them to have a good sense of time and space and persons. And we wanted them to have sufficient background in the OPS, College and Career Academies, and Pathways to do the work of the committee, that there's a lot of information that we've been processing for multiple years about what pathways mean, but it was brand-new to them beyond what they would see briefly in the newspaper or on the news. We also wanted to make sure that we tapped into our partners' interests and passions and made sure that this was something that was worthwhile use of their time and also dovetailed nicely into their current operations because we didn't want this to be one more thing. And we wanted it to be them expanding their reach and expanding their missions and purposes. We wanted to also make sure that the members of the committee felt like they were part of the community and welcome to anything that we had going. So they were invited to come see the statue unveiling for Gail Sayers. They were invited to the Fall Play, and we had one person come with this child who got scared of the flying monkeys in the Wizard of Oz. They had a nice conversation about make-believe and being safe in the theater, and so that was a beautiful thing. And we also meaningfully involved the student ambassadors to make sure that the community partners weren't just coming in and hearing from the staff, that they really got a sense of what it was that the kids cared about, got a sense of what it was that the kids were hoping to see as a result of the pathways. So as we were creating this sense of where we were in the process, the very first meeting was in May of last year, so Cinco de Mayo last year. We spent our time talking about what are pathways, talking about the phased-in approach that we weren't going to start with everything all figured out, that we needed their help as we were going through the process. We were really looking at what was interesting to them. We talked about the scope of the work, their roles and responsibilities, and we talked about what their next steps would be. Summer, they hung out with us for multiple hours. We were at UNO, and we talked about what Portrait of a Graduate is and why that's important to them in their workplaces and how this focus would assist them in their operations. We did some brainstorming about the types of ways they wanted to engage. We went back to the purpose and value of the pathways, and we really set a plan and goals for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. By the time we came back in September, we talked about the context for the year and how things were going, that we made it through the pandemic, and now what? Now what are the challenges that we're facing? We talked about the fact that OPS and any public school is going to move at a different sort of pace and with different considerations than you have in business and industry because you can be agile in business and industry and make immediate switches, and we have to be very considerate and very careful in what we do. We also made sure that we expanded access to our staff and students so that they would continue to get a sense of what it was that we're doing this work for. And then in November, we transitioned to more of a subcommittee structure so that our business and industry partners would be driving the bus in terms of where they wanted to devote their time and energy and efforts. And then on November seventeenth- And then on November 17th, we engaged in some collaborative decision making and planning about a pathway showcase night that we had in December. And so in November, we made the ask saying, would you like to have a presence at an event in December? And they said, yep, let's make it happen. And they just immediately stepped up and created a plan. And everybody sent personnel to make sure that our students had an authentic experience when they looked at what pathways are available to them and where those pathways can lead after graduation. So they had a clear sense of where they would be heading after graduation. And so now I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Brant, who's going to talk about our pathway showcase night.
Thank you, CFC. So CFC mentions a pathway showcase night. Last year, as a team, we said, how can we help our freshman students feel connected to, learn more about their pathways? So they make the most educated, responsible, best decision for themselves as they're going forward. So what we came up with was to invite family to the school. We had teachers set up tables. We had experience and artifacts for kids to look at with families as they were picking a pathway. And as Dr. Flaherty Colling mentioned, this year we said, I think we can enhance this. I think we can make it even bigger and better in our second year. And I think we can do that by bringing in our community partners. They were eager to come on board. So that night, their presence was a gift to our, to our community, to be honest. So most of our pathways had community members present. And in conjunction with our teachers, they were truly able to let kids have a hands-on experience and really get a lot of information prior to selecting their pathways. So we had kids who were able to engage with 3D models of the brain as they worked with our UNMC partners and our global health science pathway. They received examples of foreign currency as they chatted with our partners from First National Bank of Omaha within the international business and finance pathway. On this next slide, you will see additional partners who were present with us that night. Some of those partners included members from the Omaha arts community. They were able to talk to our kids about what it will be like to connect with them within our global arts focus areas. We had partners from Ali Porter Machado, who had no shortage of blueprints and design books for our families to peruse as they chatted about the architecture and design pathways. So the partners that I mentioned by name are just a few of the partners that were there. There are just a few of the partners that are on our board. But what's exciting is every single partner is just as engaged in the process and just as eager to give our kids experiences. They want to help them see themselves in the workforce in the future, see themselves after college in the future. And they want to make those connections for them. So our upcoming priorities with our community partner advisory board is to bring the community to our students. Since this is our first year, we haven't been doing this for multiple years. We're getting our feet wet, we're getting started. And so we said, let's start small. Let's do it in a way that's manageable and accessible to our 700 kids in the sophomore class. And so we're going to say, bring some meaningful career experiences to us within the walls of our building. And the board is actively working on doing that. Over the summer, in preparation for next school year, excuse me, school year, our partners will be collaborating with our teachers to develop lessons that will be delivered in freshman seminar courses to better help students learn more about each pathway and to expose them even earlier. So they have more time to really think and dive in and develop as they make their decisions. And then during the 2223 school year, our partners will collaborate to facilitate field trips for our sophomore students and then help to support some mock interviews for our junior students. So we're very excited about things that are coming up for us. We have so many ideas. We have so much input from our advisory board, from our students. And we're really hoping that next year we can come back and say, here's all the awesome stuff we've done, right? So this year, we're kind of prepping and planning. And we are very, very excited that we have Chris Poor here with us. He is from Mutual of Omaha and he is one of our partners. He also serves as our advisory committee chair. And he is going to chat with you guys about his role.
Thank you, honored to be here tonight to take a few minutes out of, out of your, your busy agenda. And let me just say on a personal level, it's been great for me to be involved in this program at Central High School. I grew up in the Omaha area, attended OPS schools through the ninth grade. I was a Monroe Mustang, at which point my, my parents made the decision to move us out of the metro area. I would have attended Central had we stayed. And so I always feel like I missed on that opportunity to be a part of a, the Central High School community. And so this has been great to kind of come full circle. So I'm very honored to be here tonight. Like, like she said, my name's Chris Poor. I'm an information services manager at Mutual of Omaha. I am honored to represent my company and the business community as part of the Central Pathway Program. We look at this as a creative solution that helped try and solve several issues that we in the business community have. Like I've heard referenced here tonight, low unemployment and a difficult time finding qualified people to, to fill the openings that we have. At Mutual, we're very fortunate. We went to a hybrid employee model through COVID. And so we are able to hire nationally. But most Omaha businesses can't do that, right? You can't hire teachers that live in Texas or California or other places, right? So a program like the Pathways is something that we think can help really address that, right? Start to engage with our students early, show them what a career path looks like here in the Omaha area so that they don't have to move to Chicago or Austin or Denver or wherever it is that they think they can, you know, make a better life, that these opportunities exist here in, here in Omaha. And stemming the brain drain, right? That's another big challenge that, that, that we face. I have two, I have a senior in high school and, and a sophomore in college, right? My sophomore is off at college, she left the state. My son is considering doing the same. So these are very real issues for me personally. And so if we can again, get a hold of these students early, show them these amazing opportunities that exist here in Omaha that they just may not be aware of, we're hoping that we can, you know, have an impact there. So I've only been involved with the program for just a couple of months now, but I've been very impressed by a couple of things. First and foremost, the students, I mean Joshua, right? I have to follow this guy? Come on, that's, that's a, a big shoes to fill. The excitement they bring, their engagement with, with the process that I have seen, the questions they ask, and when we ask them questions, the responses they give have been amazing. The mornings where I show up for a meeting at Central, one of the ambassadors is there to walk me into the school. We have a nice little chat. It's always very clear that, that, that the future is, is in good hands with these students. And I've also been very impressed with, with the faculty and the staff. Christie's done an amazing job taking all these different people and throwing this program at them that, that like she talked about, we didn't really know how this was going to work. We didn't have a whole lot of rules or guidelines, so we kind of had to figure it out as we went. But it's been very clear that, that they're experts in their areas, they're up to the task and that they've been great partners for us and industry to work with so far. And this is really a team effort. So I'm standing here before you tonight, but there's a lot of people involved in this program. And so I just wanted to give a shout out to the other pathway committee chair folks that couldn't be here with us tonight. Taylor Wyatt from Omaha Performing Arts, she is in charge of the global arts pathway. Omaha Performing Arts has as a part of their core mission, education. So they're, they're a perfect kind of a partner for a program like this. Michael Salerno from First National Bank, he is in charge of the, the leadership and global studies pathway. First National is committed to supporting the communities they serve. And so his involvement in this program is, is an example of that. And our other Michael, Michael Hollins from UNMC heads up our STEM pathway. UNMC is, is a teaching and education organization, just like OPS, right? And so their passion is preparing future healthcare workers to work in our community. So all of us together and all of the names of the other businesses that are involved in this that, that haven't been named, we're just a tiny slice of the, the business community that exists in Omaha. And so we see really good things come out of this program. And we just encourage Central High and the administration and the OPS board to continue to build these relationships and help get the next generation of workers ready. Thank you, that's all I've got. Who am I handing it off to?
Questions?
Questions?
Josh? First, Josh, can you please share what we have in common?
I am actually from Kettering, Maryland, Prince George's County, Maryland. And Dr. Cheryl Logan was actually a principal over there in the PGCPs system. And so we're connected in that way.
So I had to share that because, and you have been in Omaha since sixth grade, is it sixth grade?
Seventh.
Seventh grade, okay. Can you talk to me a little bit about the IB program? You didn't talk about it as much. I know that when I saw, when I actually think of substitute taught in your classroom, but. Can you talk a little bit about the IB program, the college credits that you are, are eligible to earn? And how you plan to use that for your, to catapult you to your next journey?
Yes, the IB program is great. Omaha Central is the only one in the OPS system to actually have the IB program. And the IB program is geared to helping students from freshman year. Well, they actually have IB schools from all the way in preschool, but in the high school level, to be able to gear them for college. It's basically like AP, but on steroids in a way. Every single class that I take is college credit, going from four years of Spanish going on, or you can take German, any other one that you would like to take. Every single class is a college credit class and it prepares you. We have to write 14-page papers. And every single one of our classes, we have to write papers on what we find interesting. I wrote my paper actually on how there was black struggle within Langston Hughes poetry. And there were so many different opportunities that are given to us. We're also given the opportunity to learn about social, cultural anthropology and also computer science. But our classes can translate over to colleges through taking our tests, kind of like the AP test. If you get a four, a five or a six or a seven, you can be able to transfer that over to college to be able to kind of exempt from a college class. But also the IB program is amazing because it allows students to understand what they're going to be getting into at the next level. It allows us to be able to engage with work and actually fall in love with learning even more. I find it fascinating because of the, the small group of community that also pushes us harder and harder to continuously to learn. And the person that is over the IB department, which is Mrs. Andrews, she's amazing. And she always wants to help us to push forward. She writes recommendations. She helps us understand how to public speak, how to be able to write better and do so many different things. But I plan to go to college for management and finance, which I'll major in. And I'll minor in entrepreneurship and Spanish. And I plan to create a nonprofit organization that helps those in lower economic communities find financial freedom. And I want to be able to mentor those who aren't able to understand finances and budgeting and help them to understand where I've come from and how they can make it to the next level. Thank you.
Questions, colleagues? Ms. Cassidy?
Thank you, President Holman. And thank you, Josh. That was great. So for those of you that don't know, we redistrict. Earlier this year, there was redistricting that went on. And because of that, I now have inherited Central High as one of the schools that I handle in my sub-district. So got you guys tonight. Thank you, thank you, Principal Kirksey. But I have to say, earlier in the semester, I went and visited Central. And it was really the first time that I'd ever been to Central. I'm a South O girl, so I don't usually cross the line over into the downtown area. But I have to say that Principal Kirksey gave me a fantastic tour. And I could feel immediately the tradition and how strong it is at your school. And as I stood in the hallway and was just kind of noticing all of the Hall of Fame pictures, it just, it really just, it was really just taken, it made me take, took me back for a moment just to see the tradition. And now that I see these folks that are in your community partners, that it all just ties together. So I do want to say, I love that you, how you chose the names for your freshman academy. That's really cool. I did see a lot of those same folks' pictures. And I think that's really a neat way to engage the community and also remind your students that there is so much tradition at Central. One thing I just want to make a comment, I don't really have a question, but I think one thing that was a little bit maybe scary for some of us when we were implementing and deciding if the careers academies and pathways was going to be something that we were going to move forward with, was whether or not we would have the community support in order to fill all of the advisory boards. You know, who will want to be on these advisory boards? Will we have enough community involvement? Will we have businesses in Omaha? I think slide nine is a testament to that. You guys really have picked wonderful companies that you're able to showcase. Thank you for being here, of course, Mutual of Omaha, for sure. But you can see in these companies that there's no lack of businesses and community support that are willing to be a part of moving forward, moving the Omaha Public Schools forward with our communities and pathways. And you guys have done a great job. There's a lot of downtown crowd in there, for sure. You picked a lot of companies that are right in your neighborhood and right in your backyard. So keep up the great work. This is a great testament that I think that we made the correct decision in implementing these, this, this pathways and academies the way that we did. You guys are doing a fantastic job. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cassidy. Vice President Erdnberger?
I just have one question. I mean, this is remarkable and you have done such a wonderful job. My question is kind of the next level up. And so I think it's for Ms. Kristofferson. Please, thank you. All of the different initiatives that have been described tonight, from the naming of the teams, which was super cool, to how they're working with their partners and everything else. I guess my question is, do this, do other, is there an opportunity for all of the schools to learn from each other a good idea or oops, don't try this, we tried it, don't go there? I mean, because these guys are doing such a phenomenal job. I would hate to think that other schools aren't getting the benefit of what they are learning and developing. And that's my question, how do other schools participate and share?
We have several ways that we're going about doing this because it is something new for us to be working collectively with all nine high schools together. And so for this past summer, we actually hosted our very first college and career academies and pathways workshop, where all nine of our high schools brought teams in where we could collectively talk and work together. Delane and his team actually host curriculum specialist meetings. We also have school design meetings, which you've heard about, which help to collectively share different ideas. And one of the things that we've just done recently is after North shared their presentation, we've shared that out with all of the schools. We will be sharing Centrals out with all of our schools. And as each school progresses and shares their information with you, we are sharing that collectively with all of our principals because we also not want to make sure that we're just sharing it with our high schools because they are having those conversations, principal meetings, they're having some of those conversations. But also we want to make sure our very youngest, our pre-K, all the way through, understand what the opportunities look like for them by staying and being a part of the Omaha community and a part of the Omaha Public Schools district.
Because I, I thought particularly the showcase in December at your school was brilliant. And I, one of the other things that I like about this, about you working with all nine high schools, it really responds to one of the other issues that's important to us. And that is to make sure that every student gets the benefit of the best possible programs, regardless of what high school they go to. And to the extent that you're sharing and, you know, developing together, that is a big step in that direction. So it, it does warm my heart to know that this is working out so better than expected. How's that? Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Juarez?
Thank you, Dr. Holman. So I just have a comment that I wanted to make, that I definitely appreciate all the partners that are helping with our program. But we also had a guest last month that came. And what grabs my attention is when you talk about architecture. And I told our last guest that I have a wonderful real world project for you, which is my kitchen. And I'm looking for an architect to come and help with my kitchen. I want to do an expansion. So I'm going to take the opportunity to promote that project. I invite you to come and do a field trip to my house so you could see what I want done and we could collaborate on that project. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Havilich will make note of that for some of our other programs and opportunities we have as well.
Our students do not work for free. I just want to make sure, let it be very clear on that.
That's fantastic. Any other comments?
Well, thank you all so much, Central High School and administration for being here. Students, we appreciate you all.
Thank you.
Fantastic work going on at all of our high schools. And thank you so much for being here tonight, Central High School. We're going to give them a second to... Oh, we get gifts! We'll just take like a minute break to get these passed out. Okay, now we will be continuing on with the regular order of the agenda. So, now we're moving back up to public comment. Thank you again for your patience and your flexibility in allowing our students and high school district officials to speak with us this evening. So, again, we have fourteen speakers who have submitted request-to-speak forms. The board has adopted Policy 8346, which provides public comment for a period of one hour.
Dr. Holman, I'd like to make a motion to suspend Policy 8346 to extend the maximum duration of public comment. In keeping with the provisions of Policy 8320, and in order to provide all of those who timely submitted their requests to be heard forms with the opportunity to speak, I move to suspend Policy 8346, Part, Subpart E, as follows. Extend the maximum duration of the public comment until all speakers who timely submitted their requests to be heard forms have been heard for tonight's meeting only.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to suspend Policy 8346 to extend the maximum duration of public comment until all speakers who timely submitted their requests to be heard forms have been heard for tonight's meeting only. There's a second by, I think it's Ms. Crackey's first. Second by Ms. Crackey, any discussion? Roll call, Mr. Ray?
Smith?
Aye.
Tealyn?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Erdenberger?
Aye.
Foel?
Aye.
Head?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Juarez?
Aye.
Crackey?
Aye.
Nai-Nai?
Motion carries. Okay, so with that, all of tonight's speakers, you will be able to, all of tonight's speakers who have submitted a request to be heard from will be allowed to speak tonight beyond a hour if indeed we need that time to do so. So, each speaker will have a maximum of five minutes to speak, and we ask that you respect that time limit. Mr. Ray will let you know when you have one minute remaining and when you have thirty seconds remaining. Given the number of speakers, we ask that to the extent that you're able, you keep your comments brief so that we can hear from as many people as possible from tonight's meeting. If you're in need of an interpreter, please let Mr. Ray know, and one will be provided for you. We understand that everyone has strong feelings about the issues that you come to speak about. So, we also ask that you respect the opinions of all who speak and that you refrain from any applause or other outbursts during tonight's presentations. If the subject of your public comment is related to a particular student or staff member, we ask that you not identify the student or staff member and instead provide that information to Mr. Ray. He will assist us into looking into those types of specifics for you. If you do not get an opportunity to speak and would like to submit any written commentary, please provide that to Mr. Ray, and he will make sure that each member of the board receives a copy. As a reminder, with last year's passage of LB-83 by the Nebraska Legislature, the Board of Education is legally obligated to require any member of the public desiring to address the board to identify themselves, including an address and the name of the organization you may represent, unless the requirement is waived for security reasons. We did not have any waivers, with the exception, we do have a student from the Omaha Public Schools that will be speaking, so that student will not have to provide their address. We all ask that all other individuals, please state and spell your first and last name, state your current address, and let us know if you are here representing any particular organization before your public comment begins. In addition, we ask that you remain seated until called to the podium. And please remain at the podium, and do not approach the board table. If you have materials to distribute, please let me know, and Mr. Ray will come get them from you. It is now 7:07 PM, and our first speaker of the evening is Eugene Rollerson. It looks like some heads are shaking, so he may have left. Okay, thank you for letting me know. Moving on next to Terrence Mackey. Okay, Mr. Mackey, looks like he has left as well. Gracie Smith. Good evening and welcome.
Hi. I am Gracie Smith. My son, huh?
State and spell your first and last name and provide your address, please.
Oh, Gracie, G-R-A-C-I-E, Smith, S-M-I-T-H. My address is 5416 Camden Avenue, here in Omaha, Nebraska. I'm here, my, my son Ricky Smith is a, is a board member. He's going to, wants to run for president. And actually, I couldn't think of a better person. And I might be a little biased, but Ricky is a great, great young man, great father, great brother. He can't help but want to, to be out here helping the kids because his dad was out here for years, and he passed away in 2020. And he was out here for years and years and years, helping kids, you know, getting kids off the street and going to kids' homes and inviting them to my home when I didn't know nothing about it. And I go home and I got a fix dinner. I think I've got seven at home, and I get home and I got fifteen, so. Ricky is a hands-on. He wants to be the voice for the children, for the kids. He's strictly for the kids. He's, he's going to help do whatever it is he needs to do. He's not a sit behind a desk type person. He wants to get out in the street and do hands-on. You know, hands-on, he's out there at eight, nine o'clock at night. I told him this Christmas that I was going to buy him a bulletproof vest because he's out there. He's out there in the trenches, you know, with, with a lot of the gang members he's familiar with. You know, they eat, they, they come to him, he's easy to talk to as far as those young people are concerned. And, you know, he's just been, he's been there. You can call him, Ricky's get calls at eight, nine, ten o'clock at night. I'll call him, I'll say, "Son, what are you doing?" "Oh, I just got off the phone with so-and-so's mother." I said, "Okay, do they ever go to bed, or can they let you go to bed?" But he's there to help, you know, whatever he can do, he will help. All you have to do is call him. He doesn't, I mean, he really does not shut off his phone. The kids know his, his phone by, by heart, and they know how to reach him. When other people can't, they know they can. And he's just here to help, you know. And I think he would be a good asset to, to the school board. He's been on the board himself for like two, two years? Four years? Wow, where I been? Okay, four years. And, you know, I think he's done a great job. I think he will be a great person to, to be president. And like I said, he's a hands-on, he's a tight person. He's not going to be sitting behind a desk and waiting for stuff to come to him. He goes out in the streets, you know, and, and talks to these kids. And a lot of the kids know and respect him. And he has my vote all the time. Thank you.
Next tonight, we have Maxell Maxwell Ambrys. Hello, good evening.
Good evening. My name is Maxwell Ambrys. I am the Minister of the Fort Street Church of Christ, Sixtieth and Ford. 6231 Kansas Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, 68104. It is a privilege.
Sir, I'm sorry, could you also spell your first and last name?
Yes, absolutely. M-A-X-W-E-L-L and A-M-B-R-I-S. Thank you so very much. It's an honor and a privilege to be here, gracious opportunity to stand before you and to all of you, the board members and president, Dr. Holman and Dr. Logan. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm here in support of Ricky Smith. I have been in the Omaha area for thirteen years now. And I was, when I first came, I made it my business to attend every graduation of the students that were part of the congregation. And I probably never missed any of them. And every time I went, Ricky was there. And it, that, that made me look at him in a different light in the sense that he, he's for the students, and he's for the young people of this community. And I only have one child, if I had about twenty, amen. I would, I would trust him with those kids. I've seen him in action when he's there for those youth of this community. I've seen him been able to help young women and young men be better as a result of his being also on the Director of Omaha 360 and, and involved in the Step Up Program. I, I, he has my vote. I am grateful to be able to say he's a good friend of mine. And anytime he needs me, I'm there. And, and I'm grateful to throw my support. And I know my members would be behind me on that. And I thank you all for this opportunity. We need leadership. Leadership in a person is consistency. We need people that are committed, people that are dedicated to the cause. And Ricky is sure enough one who is dedicated to the cause. I often say that all of you, and I pray that you are all for the students, for the young person. So, I am grateful to know we have such a person in this community that, that is, as his mama said, and I can't top you, amen. I can't top you from what you say, your mama. But I concur with what she says. His phone is all, on all the time. And, and anytime that you, he's just like me. And that's how I know, when you're a true servant, you, you, you are a people person. You are a person that don't turn your phone off. And anytime somebody needs you, you're there. And so, I, I am grateful to have, again, known Ricky these thirteen years since I've been in the Omaha area. And I thank God that he's on this board. And, and I threw my support a thousand percent behind Ricky as the next president of the board. Thank you so very, very much. Question?
Thank you. Next, we have Brian Page.
Brian Page, address 4810 North 135th Avenue, Pastor of the Pleasant Green Baptist Church, which is located 5555 Laramore Avenue. Good evening. In this short period of time, thank you.
Pastor Page, could you spell your first and last name, please?
Sure, B-R-I-A-N-P-A-G-E. All right. First, good evening, thank you for the opportunity to come to speak on behalf of someone I've known for over forty years. As his mother stated, growing up in the household, his father was a great mentor. A lot of father figure to a lot of us in our community. Many of the members of my church grew up in the Smith household on Camden Street. And so, we've known Ricky, I would say, since he could barely walk, over forty years. And it's just a joy to watch how Ricky has grown in, in his passion for young people. So, I fully support Ricky Smith to be the next president of the OPS Board. And when I was thinking about what can I share with you that you maybe don't know, my thoughts was, I've known him personally, I can vouch for his character. And I've known him professionally, watching Ricky, what he's done throughout this community for a very long time. One thing about him also is passionate. If you know Ricky Smith, you know he is very passionate about the youth in our community. And we don't have a lot of young men like that in our community. We need more Ricky Smiths of the world to serve in our community. But then also, he is prepared. He just didn't wake up and say, "I want to be school board president." His work speaks for itself by leading the Omaha 360, the work at the Urban League, the work he's done in the University of Nebraska at Omaha. I mean, his resume goes on and on. It's all about empowering young people in our community. And having an opportunity to be on one of his youth summits that he had at the University of Omaha years ago just shows me that he's in this to last. He, he's built to last. He's not in it for a short period of time, for a title, anything like that. Ricky Smith is genuinely concerned about our community. And I'm proud to be his friend for over forty years. And I believe in the members of the Pleasant Green Baptist Church, where I served, where many of the members grew up with Ricky as well, has served with him in the community. I believe Ricky Smith would make a great president for the Omaha School Board. And I hope you would consider voting for him on this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Dr. Marquisha Frost. Did I pronounce your name correctly?
You did, you did.
Good, welcome.
Thank you very much. I'm so glad to be here. Dr. Marquisha Frost, that is spelled M-A-R-Q-U-I-S-H-A. Last name is F-R-O-S-T. My address is 13016 Ames Avenue, zip code is 68131. I stand before you all today as a alum of Omaha Public Schools District and a parent of an Omaha Public Schools student, but more importantly, as a product of Ricky Smith's leadership. I met Rick when I was twelve years old. He was working at Creighton in the Trio Program at the time. And one constant of Rick from that time up to now, as an adult woman who has completed a bachelor's and two master's programs and a PhD program, is his level of consistency and support. And so, when I think about the Omaha Public Schools District, and I think about the things that I learned in the classroom, and I think about the people who supported me outside of the classroom, Rick is always at the top of the list of those to thank and those who were consistent in my journey. So, the mission and the vision is every student, every day, prepared for success. The mission to prepare all students for success in college, career, and life. As a student who's a product of this district, what I trust that this means and what I've felt as a student is that this is speaking to a continuity of care. And when I think about a continuity of care, not only inside this school district, but outside of it, Rick personifies this mission, and he personifies this vision. When I think about a continuity of care, it's someone who shows up when students need them, when no one else is around. He's a person of integrity, that he knows no limits to service. Many of the folks before me spoke to him about him and being a servant leader. And when I think about my twelve-year-old self, who had no idea how to get to college as a first-generation student, there, there was no limit to the questions I could ask Rick or the spaces that I could count on him to show up for me. My mother, who was, knew she had a brilliant daughter, if I do say so myself, was extremely excited that I had met someone who understood the pathway to college. And so, when I think about what OPS is trying to do today, it mirrors the experience that Rick has lived and stood and navigated over the past twenty-five years, plus, in his community and his career. He was there when I needed help with my FAFSA. I called him, or he called me, actually, and he said, "Where are you? You missed the FAFSA workshop." And I said, "Oh, I can't make it, I don't have a ride, my mom's car broke down." And Rick, I don't know, had hung up on me. At some point, got on the phone with my mother, and he said, "I'm on my way to get her. Here are the documents I need you to have, we're going to complete her FAFSA." And we did. And that's how our relationship continued. I have not applied for a program without a recommendation letter from Rick. I have not negotiated a salary without input from Rick. I navigated California and Georgia and, and becoming a parent with Rick by my side. A big part of my decision to return to Omaha six months ago was Rick, recognizing the level of responsibility and commitment to this community. And what he, the only thing he ever asked me to do is to return, to return the favor by pouring into someone else, by returning the favor, by giving someone else a hand up. There's no way to repay a person who has been... There's no way to repay a person who has been this instrumental in my life. I get emotional and promise not to. But when I think about all that I have been able to overcome, it is not by happenstance. It is by people like Ricky Smith. So as if my personal testament is not enough, I'd like to speak just for a short while about his professional acumen. Rick's reputation and his CV precedes him. When I think about the professionals in this community, many of them leave, right? You all as board members know all too well how difficult it can be to keep talent, right? To retain talent. Dr. Logan is a testament to that. We're going to miss you and your leadership here. But Rick is one of the people who has stayed and stuck around because he is a mission-centric and student-centered person. I had the pleasure of interning at the Urban League of Nebraska, which resulted in a full-time employment offer that was led and offered by Rick. Under his leadership, I have learned how to serve and pour into other people and recognize that when you see a student, it is not just the student that you're serving, but the family and the community that they are connected to. Rick has a standard of excellence. As you have heard, his Omaha 360 program is unmatched and undeniably makes a difference in this community. And we oftentimes think about the difference without having a measurement to success. Rick is the measurement. He provides data-driven and best practices and has the tools equipped to not only lead this board, but the families and the schools that are connected to it. So my endorsement is not just a personal one, but a professional one. He is well-connected.
Sorry. Thank you. Next, we have Tiffany Wright. Welcome.
Hi, good evening. My name is Tiffany, T-I-F-F-A-N-Y, last name Wright, W-R-I-G-H-T. Address is forty-four eighty-eight Redmond Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, six eight one one one. I just wanted to start off by saying thank you for having me here. I'm here to support Ricky. He is dedicated. He's hardworking. He's for our youth. He has the program, the Omaha Youth 360, that my daughter attends, helps build her self-esteem and, you know, allows her to make positive choices. It allows them all to, you know, become great leaders in the community. I did have an instance, a problem at the school with my daughter being bullied. I was getting nowhere. Her teacher finally reached out to me and let me know, you know, Ricky Smith is here. He got the job done. My daughter was, actually, she had to go to counseling. She was losing sleep. It was a horrible situation. But as the teacher, we got in a meeting and sat down with Mr. Smith, everything was done. And to this day, Ricky is probably one of her most important people in her life. She loves him. And I thank him for that. And he would be awesome as the president. Thank you.
Next, we have Jennifer Clark. Good evening.
Good evening, board members. Thank you for having me. I'm Jennifer, J-E-N-N-I-F-E-R, Clark, C-L-A-R-K. My address is seven zero two nine Valley Road, six eight one two eight. So I'm a little nervous. I didn't, he probably didn't even know I was coming tonight. When I heard, I knew I had to come. I appreciate hearing these stories because I don't know Ricky on a personal level like that. But like Ms. Tracy, I'm a South Omaha girl. And I might, you know, quickly was driven to get in the community and, and start helping people. And so when my passion led me to the North Omaha community, I quickly started hearing Ricky Smith, Ricky Smith, Ricky Smith. And then as I started working at an organization and had the opportunity to go to certain events, I'm like, oh, that's Ricky Smith. So then I would have the opportunity to start going to the Omaha 360 meetings. And I was just blown away because I was working for an organization that worked with families and youth that were in need. And I was just, I, I love the fact that we had so much information. We had so many resources. So I was able to leave every meeting with resources to bring to my families and my youth. And I was quickly seeing how this was helping. There was so much out there that we didn't know about. And here, I was able to have the opportunity to connect those resources with my family. But then there is something that struck me too is the collaboration, you know? I started saying to myself, I thought I was doing a good job in the organization, being able to have opportunities to work with families. But then I realized I can get even more. I didn't have to work for an organization. I can get out the streets and in the streets like Mr. Smith and a lot of the people he surrounded himself around. So as I made that decision to get more into the community, just because I was impacted by the impact that Mr. Smith and a lot of his support team was having, I decided to just start a youth program. And that was the first time I got to even see Mr. Smith in person. He accepted the invite and right away jumped at the opportunity to come work with these students, not even knowing that I was someone in the background, just like watching him and knowing that he was going to have an impact on these youth. And then from that point on, during COVID, the program shut down or whatnot. And I continued to attend the meetings and just wanted to show up in any way I can. And Ricky gave me the opportunity because he, being innovative, being at the meeting, said, hey, we've done a lot of intervention. How can we jump ahead of the youth and start a prevention program? And so he asked me to, you know, work with him with the Omaha U-360. So it just put me in position again to be able to reach out to youth, not just through where I am now at Omaha Street School. Lo and behold, I'm at Omaha Street School and I'm working and we have our graduation and this is the first graduation I'm attending. And he's the commencement speaker. So again, it's just, it's, the thing about Ricky is I realized that I was only seeing him here and there and hearing about him is because I wasn't in far enough. I wasn't in the streets. I wasn't working with as closely as I thought and having the, the best impact. So first time you've probably heard this. And I just appreciate the opportunities and allowing me to, you know, work aside you. And I'm going to keep reaching for every opportunity. And this would be huge. This, this is something that Ricky is so fit for, just hearing his mother talking about, you know, bringing additional people into the home and how he's impacted people that he probably hasn't even realized. And that's not working for Omaha 360 or empowerment or whatnot. So I think he's perfect because I've heard him say this speech, the ABCs and Ds of life. I don't know if I say it right, but I've heard it a few times because he spoke to my family, my kids. He has the attitude. He has the belief. He has the commitment. He has the discipline every day. So I think he'd be a perfect fit for the, the position as president of the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Willie Barney. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Willie Barney, one twenty-three thirty-three Cummings Street, W-I-L-L-I-E-B-A-R-N-E-Y. Before I speak specifically about why I came today, I wanted to say, first of all, Dr. Logan, thank you. I know we still have six more months to work together. But I was here that night when you sat here and the excitement in the room. You are a first of many to, first to do what you've done in this city, in this spot. And we appreciate your leadership through one of the most difficult, challenging times in the history of the world, in the city. And thank you to the board for your leadership because you've had to make some really difficult decisions. You haven't been the most popular, but you've made those decisions. And because of that, we now on, on the backside, looking at how do we now help the kids catch up again and get to a point where they can, as a young man that spoke, as a doctor that just spoke, I'm even more hopeful tonight, listening and hearing from them. I'm not sure how much more we can add because that is what OPS has always been about. And you're now moving back into this mode of the most important decision, important work that this board ever has to do. And that is identifying the next CEO, the next superintendent of OPS, which has fifty-two thousand students. And in this organization, this, the school district impacts this state more so than any organization anywhere in the state. So I don't typically speak in the position that I'm in about a specific individual and, and position. But I think we're in a different time. We're in a different time right now. And it's going to take all of us. And I, I stand as a parent that has a son that went through OPS, went to, attended Central, benefited from the Career Center. He's at University of Nebraska-Lincoln, studying there. I have a daughter that's at Central now that loves the pathway. I talked to her before I came here. She asked me where I was going. I said, I'm going to speak to the board. I said, is it okay for me to say how much you love the international business pathway at Central? And she said, absolutely. I'm enjoying that learning from it. So she was talking to me about that today. But I'm here and I want to say specifically, I want to support Ricky Smith. I want to say that because Ricky has probably twenty years together of working specifically for the youth. You cannot question his commitment to the youth of our city. And as you now move into this next level of identifying the next CEO, the next superintendent of this district, how powerful it would be for this community to see someone that has worked with our kids in the school, at the K level, at the elementary level, at the middle school level, helped kids get into college, gone through the barriers and the challenges to be effective at getting them into UNO and other schools across the country, working with them in the most difficult, challenging environment after an incident of violence has occurred, working with those families. So now, taking that experience of college, of career preparedness, scholarships, Urban League University, all of those striving for success, I can keep naming initiatives and commitment that Ricky has made over these years that I've known him. Now translating that into policy, translating it into working with you collectively to prepare for the next superintendent of these schools. So I stand in support of Ricky, not only the work that he has done, but the possibilities of what can be done, working with all of you. And I stand as a parent, I stand as a community partner, ready to work with this school board to move to the next level. So I just wanted to say again, thank you, Dr. Logan. Greatly appreciate your work and leadership, most challenging time that we could ever imagine. Dr. Holman, appreciate your leadership. Jane, I hope it's okay to say Jane, but the work that you've done over the years and going back some years, Ms. Crap, we've been at this for a minute and worked together a number of times on various initiatives. So again, just want to say.
One minute.
Thank you. And I, I hope as you consider leadership, you consider the importance of the community seeing someone that has been at all these various levels and worked in so many different perspectives, that would be a great champion for the kids. So thank you for your time. Greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. Next, we have Sharnell Shelton. Good evening.
Good evening. Sharnell Shelton, S-H-A-R-N-E-L-L-E, Shelton, S-H-E-L-T-O-N. My address is four four one six Regal Street. Good evening, members of the board, Dr. President Holman and Dr. Logan. I would be amiss if I got up here and didn't say, thank you, Dr. Logan. We are so sad to see you go. Thank you for keeping our children safe throughout this pandemic. Thank you for your presidency, Dr. Holman. I know we've talked about the challenges that you guys endure. So I just want to say thank you for your representation and your leadership. And I am here today to show my unwavering support for Ricky Smith as being appointed as the next member, as the next president of this board. Ricky is an accessible member of the community, as everyone spoke to prior to me. Ricky has always been able to assist me with my student. He's not even my board representative. He's always a one call, one call away when anything, when I need anything regarding the school system or anything as far as life. He's a mentor to many students within our community. He's a leader. My son is a member of the Omaha Youth 360 Leadership Program. He comes home every Wednesday to tell me about the meetings. He is so excited to have something to do. It's, which speaks to prevention, which speaks to getting youth out of the streets, keeping youth engaged, showing them life skills. And I'm so grateful to be, that my child is a part of that organization and under Ricky's leadership and mentorship. Ricky, as well as other, I've worked with him on various community projects. He's always reliable, dependable, which speaks to the leadership that we need. We need someone who is a direct representation of this community to lead as the president, as the next president of this board. So I'm here to support Ricky and I hope that you board, board members consider electing him and appointing him as the next president of the board. Thank you.
Next, we have Javen Shelton. And Javen, remember, you don't have to provide your address, but if you can just spell your first and last name, please.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Javen Shelton, J-A-Y-V-E-N-S-H-L-E-T-O-N. And I'm a junior at Omaha North High School. I am here to show my support for Ricky Smith being appointed as the president of the school board. I am a member of the Omaha U-360, which is a program headed by Ricky Smith. I love this program because the meetings bring in motivational speakers that are doing some, doing something successful with their life. Every speaker gives advice and life skills to use in life. And not every kid doesn't get the opportunity to hear motivational speeches from people around, from, from people around our community. Ricky is a great person. He checks up on kids to see if they are doing what they're supposed to. One time he asked me why I was late to class and I was like, how you know? Ricky, Ricky is the one who brings the motivational speakers from around our community to speak with us. Not only that, but we, but we don't always have motivational speakers. He speaks to us to make us feel free to say what we need, to say that he can do anything possible to give us advice or to improve or to tell us right from wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, Javen, for coming tonight. Make sure you get to class on time. Our next speaker is Anthony Zarziki. Yes. I remember from the last time. Welcome.
Hi. Now, we're something completely different. Anthony J. Zarziki, A-N-T-H-O-N-Y-J, Z is in zebra, A-R, Z is in zebra, Y, C-K-I. The person who was right in the desk, I have papers to, Matthew, right, there we go. I wanted to.
Could you share your address, please?
Oh, yeah. Eleven twenty-seven Marcy Plaza, Omaha, Nebraska, six eight one oh eight. I wanted to bring this up last month because it's on the topic of free money, which is the best gift to receive. I, growing up, didn't realize how low-income me and my family were. It wasn't really until we filled out the FAFSA application, the free application for financial student aid, which usually most students take if they want to go to college, that I realized how much of the Pell Grant I was qualified for and how much state funding I was qualified for. In fact, I didn't realize that I was only a few hundred dollars shy from qualifying, or qualifying for free reduced lunch. And when I went to college, I found other people like me. But I also found lots of students who didn't know what FAFSA meant, didn't know it was an acronym, didn't know who Pell was or why his last name was Grant. And so I looked more into this. And a lot of states are actually now requiring FAFSA application for all graduating seniors as a graduation requirement. And to do that would allow a lot more money to come in to OPS students to go to college. Right now, one of the organizations I found online estimated that twenty million dollars in grant funding from FAFSA would have been eligible for Nebraska students. And if you just take a quick estimate about how much OPS enrolls students, it'd be about three million dollars that students could qualify for. A lot of them who might not ever apply to it because they don't think that they would qualify because they think that they might make too much, or people who don't think that college is an, an option for them because they don't make enough. As well, the Nebraska Promise, which can fully fund a student's tuition and go to school in-state. The only way to qualify for that is if you fill out FAFSA. There's no application you do or anything else. It has to go through FAFSA. And I was surprised to learn that the state senator in my district in South Omaha, Tony Vargas, actually brought a bill up to do this statewide in 2020. And it passed, but due to the pandemic, when the governor vetoed it, they couldn't overturn it. I reached out to his office and it looks like they plan to bring that bill up again. But nothing's for sure. It might not pass. It might get vetoed. It might not be overturned. And so I'd ask the board to consider trying to implement this. It looks like through the Nebraska revised statutes, that school boards have the ability to add an additional graduation requirement that doesn't have to do with credit hours. And there is a specific board policy on where you'd probably look to if you wanted to include this. There's lots of other resources here. And the only other thing I want to bring up is that this could be a funded thing. The CARES Act and ESER funds, from what I read, can be used to pay for people who are already in the community to work with people, to fill out FAFSA under their college readiness provisions. So instructors who are doing, working with people, community groups that are holding workshops, Ricky Smith, who's helping fill out FAFSA forms, all those people might be able to get some CARES Act funding or ESER funds to make sure that if this is instituted as a requirement, there's also the funding and availability to make sure that people who are English second language, people who might not know all the forms they need to go through, would be able to help do this. And I think there. And I think there's an emphasis to make sure that there'd be a waiver for this. While students who are citizens can imply, there's nothing about whether your parents are documented or undocumented, for instance. And so there's a big difference between some states which have just said, "I want to waive the college or the graduation requirement for my child." There are other states that go farther and say, "I understand that by waiving this, you know, on average, we could be-"
One minute.
"-costing our child $6,000 more dollars. I understand that I want to waive this, and it has nothing to do or impact on my documentation status," stuff like that. If you have any questions, I would really recommend reaching out to the staff at Tony Vargas's office and the state senate, and they'll be able to go over their research and plans for introducing it. The worst that can happen with starting this is that you're more prepared if it does become a law. And the best that can happen is you could implement it if it doesn't end up passing the session. So, thanks so much.
Next, we have Candace Price.
Good evening. My name is Candace Price, that's spelled C-A-N-D-I-C-E-P-R-I-C-E. My address is 6005 Sorensen Parkway, zip code is 68152. So I'm here this evening to speak, as many others have, on behalf of Ricky Smith, coming in good faith, to ask that you all highly consider electing him as the next president of our school board. Before I speak further on that, though, I definitely want to speak to Dr. Logan. You have been very impactful in my household. I'm a parent of a graduate of Omaha North. She is now a student at North Carolina ANT, excelling in the engineering program. She went through one of the pathways. We recently had an opportunity for her to speak to other students virtually at one of the showcases, and that's thanks to, you know, Dr. Logan, her team, and your work. So I'm very thankful, very appreciative. She's a junior, and she's just doing wonderfully, and she is a product of OPS. So, Dr. Logan, thank you. I know what it's like to live in a place without your family near. You have been exceptional in your work. You have been such a class act, someone to look to for me to even learn how to carry myself, how to treat others even when you're not always treated the best, and so I thank you for that. So as far as Mr. Smith that everyone has spoken to, I'm so proud to know him. That's really where I want to start. He works incredibly hard. He does not turn his phone off. I know that because even over this last Christmas break, just a few days ago, someone reached out to me, a parent did, pertaining to their child, and I said, "I know exactly who to put you in touch with." So over the Christmas break, when he should have been off and resting and joining family, he was taking my calls and my text messages to help another family in which he'd never met. He got on top of it immediately, and they actually already have a solution, and school only just started back. And so I thank him for that, but that's the type of person that he is, as we've been able to hear from more. I am a business owner in the community and a community partner, and so I get to see Mr. Smith in other avenues and in other circumstances. And so it doesn't matter whether he is in a boardroom full of executives or legislators, or whether he's literally on a street corner or in one of our schools talking with the youth and talking with the children. He is able to make himself accessible on all levels. He works with those at all levels, and he makes things very easy to get done. He is loyal. We've heard people talk about his commitment, his drive, his dedication, which are all needed. But the loyalty that he has to simply doing what's right, the loyalty that he has to his community and showing others that it doesn't matter where you're coming from, you can get anywhere you desire to be, that's such a big deal. And I continue to work with youth, though my daughter has graduated, I have another child who will be entering the OPS school system, and I would be so proud for her to be able to look and see this man as the president of our school board. I thank you all for your time, your dedication. Bree, thank you, and welcome to the board this year. You guys have a lot of work in front of you. I'm very sorry that you're losing Dr. Logan, but I know that you're going to do great work in bringing on someone else. So that's all I have to say this evening. Thank you, and Ricky, thank you.
Thank you. Last but not least, we have Chief Deputy Wayne Hudson. Thank you for being here. I don't know if I've ever seen you in street clothes before.
Well, as of yesterday, I retired, so. After 28 years, Wayne Hudson, W-A-Y-N-E-H-U-D-S-O-N. I'll give my work address, 3601 North 156th Street. And it's one thing about being last, everybody took everything I was going to say, so my whole speech was written out, so I'm going to change it up. I'm going to say this here. As a law enforcement leader, I spend hundreds of hours in our community, hundreds, trying to improve our community. I see people at their worst. I go to places that people in this room would never go. But who is always there is Ricky Smith. I can call on Ricky at any time to deal with a situation, and I've done it, and he's done the same thing with me. As a law enforcement leader, we know one of the biggest parts that we always try to work on is building a bridge between our youth and law enforcement. We haven't always been doing it the best. But one individual that has always helped law enforcement do that is Ricky Smith. I'm also part of the 100 Black Men, and 100 Black Men is what they see is what they'll be. What they see in Ricky Smith is a young black man in a neighborhood trying to do well. That's what we want our kids to emulate. Think how that would be to see this young man as the board president. I'm here to fully support Ricky Smith for the next OPS board president. Thank you.
Okay. That is the end of our public comment. Moving on now to the consent agenda, and I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda that is before us.
So moved.
Mr. Tealyn?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Foal. Are there any abstentions? Ms. Cassidy?
Yes, there are. Yes, I need to abstain from item, let's see, I-10, Claim C for my role on the Omaha Public Schools Foundation. Thank you.
Thank you. So there's a motion on the floor by Mr. Tealyn, seconded by Ms. Foal, and Ms. Cassidy will be abstaining from item I-10, Claim C. Roll call, Mr. Ray?
Tealyn?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Erdenberger?
Aye.
Foal?
Aye.
Head?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Juarez?
Aye.
Cracky?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Nine I.
Motion carries. All right, since we've already completed, we have no action items for tonight, since we've already completed our information item, moving on now to... Okay, moving on now to receipt of reports. We have one report on the agenda this evening. Item L1, Head Start Monthly Board Report for November 2022. Moving on now to closed session, Vice President Erdenberger.
Took me a minute to find the script. I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the superintendent, secretary to the board, and legal counsel pending litigation, negotiations, and legal advice.
I have a motion to go into closed session by Vice President Erdenberger. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Head. Roll call, Mr. Ray?
Cassidy?
Aye.
Erdenberger?
Aye.
Foal?
Aye.
Head? Holman?
Aye.
Juarez?
Aye.
Cracky?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Tealyn?
Aye.
Nine I.
Motion carries. Let me remind the board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the superintendent, secretary to the board, and legal counsel pending litigation, negotiations, legal advice. Let the record reflect that the board went into closed session at 7:51 PM.
Okay. Let the record reflect that the board came out of closed session at eight thirty-six P M. We will end our meeting with election of officers. The O P S Board of Education shall first elect its president and then elect its vice president. Any member of the board may self nominate or be nominated by another board member. Nominating speeches are not permitted. However, nominees shall have up to five minutes to speak following the close of nominations and prior to the distribution of ballots. Nominee speeches shall be in order of nomination. Election of officers of the Board of Education shall be kept by secret ballot. Elections shall require a majority of all members of the board, which is policy eighty-one thirty and ninety-one twenty. We will now begin with nominations for the office of president. Mister Ray will pass out voting ballots. After Mister Ray tallies the votes, he will announce who the president of the board is.
We're ready. Passing our ballots.
We will now begin with nominations for the office of president.
I would self nominate.
We have a nomination, Mister Head?
I would, oh, go ahead.
I will self nominate.
Nomination, Mister Smith?
I would like to nominate Miss Jane Erdnberger.
And a nomination for Miss Erdnberger. Are there any other nominations? Okay. What'd you say? Yeah. Yep. Mister Head?
All right, well, I'll try to keep this, uh, keep this brief because I know it's late and we all have, uh, you know, have, have things to get, uh, get home to. But I, I just want to say, as a board member, I'm excited tonight. I, I really am. And it's not about my prospects of potentially getting elected. I'm excited for this board. I'm excited we have Bree joining us. We have a new board. We have a new year. We have new opportunities in front of us. And I say opportunities because I, I, I try to be positive in everything I look at. And, you know, a challenge isn't a hurdle in front of us. It's an opportunity to jump higher, run faster, throw further than we ever have. And, you know, I, I, I look at the, the candidates we have for office tonight. You know, Mister Smith, I think half the room already beat me to it. But your, your passion for this district is inspiring. I know we haven't had a lot of time to spend together, but, uh, just listening to your, your passion, how you talk about the students that you serve, the kids that you work with, it's inspiring to me and it, it makes me want to do better as a board member. Mrs. Erdnberger, the same thing. I, I, just watching how you've, you've held yourself over the last, uh, last two years, but also I think your background as both a teacher and a, and an attorney, it allows you to look at issues from unique perspectives that I wouldn't have, uh, you know, have, have thought of or have, have, have got on to. And so I, I think staying on the topic of backgrounds, that's, you know, we all bring unique, um, you know, backgrounds, unique perspectives to this board. And I think that's what makes us strong as a board. And that's what makes us great as a district, is that we can all come together with our different experiences, with our different backgrounds, with our different, you know, ways that we look at issues. And we're not all always going to agree on everything. But, you know, and, and Doctor Holman, I hope I'm not stepping on your toes because I, I mentioned our conversations earlier. And I know one of the things that I've always enjoyed doing is, you know, when, whenever looking at the agenda, I've seen an item that I have questions on, or I'm, you know, thinking about voting no, or I'm going to vote no, or I, I, I'm just not sure. I've always called you and said, you know, hey, Doctor Holman, what's going on? What's, you know, I, this is where I'm at. This is what I'm thinking about this issue. You know, A, out of respect to you, to, to, you know, let you as board leadership know where I'm at, but also to give you an opportunity to talk me out of doing what, doing what I'm thinking about doing. Um, you know, and I'd say probably half the time you've, you've, you know, talked, uh, talked me out of it and half the time we've, we've, you know, agreed to disagree. And I, I think, thinking about leadership, you know, that's what's important to me. It's trust, it's honesty, it's respect and understanding that, you know, each of us, even though we come from different backgrounds, even though we look at things differently, that we're all here with one vision in common, and that's every student, every day, prepared for success. And we all want to do what's right for our fifty-two thousand students, for our eighty-five hundred staff members, and make this district as good as it can possibly be. Um, so I, you know, I, I'm excited for this board. I'm excited for the opportunities in front of us. I'm excited for, uh, you know, for the next, uh, next, I guess this is a one-year term. I've got two years left on mine serving with. I've got two years left on mine serving with, uh, with all of you. Um, but with that, I, I would, you know, respectfully ask, uh, ask for your support. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. Um, you guys heard a lot earlier today, um, from people who really support me and stand behind me. There is a lot of things that I feel like I do bring to the board, especially as it's, we look at leadership. Priority one, academics; priority two, staff. For me, that also includes children. Financial accountability, ethic of care. These are the things that we need to refocus on and with strong leadership, we can make a change and we can make an impact in our district. I believe it's important that we have somebody who can hold each other accountable, who can agree to disagree, who can work together for our students, for our educators, and the people that make our buildings go. That's what's important. I've been on the board for a couple of years and I've listened to my constituents. But I've never got on the microphone and said constituents, because these are families. These are parents. These are people that I know and I, I go to the grocery store and they approach me and they call me. And I make myself accessible to these families, to these parents, to these students. It's that type of dedication that we have to have in board leadership. When you look at the experiences that I have, not just on the board, but outside, I ran a credit recovery program for free. I've paid teachers out of my own budget that I had to write a grant for. I understand those things and I'm a parent. I have a graduate and yesterday, I mean, this, it, it strikes so close to home because I got a phone call that my son couldn't go to chemistry class because there's blood in the hallway. You have a parent come up, come up here and talk about her child is getting bullied and it wasn't until I got there that things changed. So, we can have a direct impact if we work together. I'm the strong leader that we need to move us forward and on to the next level. And I'm dedicated to doing the job. I'm dedicated to doing the work and I'm dedicated to working with all of you to get that done. Thank you.
Ms. Erdenberger?
Thank you. And, um, thank you for your, um, inspiring words, Mr. Head and Mr. Smith. Um, it has been my honor to serve as vice president of this board for the last two years. And in that position, I have received an education in the changes and the leadership of Dr. Holman in terms of building consensus, in terms of recognizing where our priorities are supposed to be, in terms of working with the administration on a regular basis to identify those priorities and the steps that need to be taken to achieve them. I am ready to step in and continue the momentum that Dr. Holman has built for us. I would like to point out, however, that without the incredible constraints of having to deal with COVID and building four buil- soon-to-be-five buildings and implementing a brand-new curriculum program, that I think that we can use that momentum and expand on some of the things that Dr. Holman has set the groundwork for. Um, I have spoken to most of you and I've identified some of the things that, um, I am interested in accomplishing. And you also know that I have thought a lot about what we can be doing as a board, what we can be doing to move forward, particularly in this year. It's so important that we have consistency, that we are forward progress. We don't have to rebuild any airplanes while we're flying them. It's incredibly important that we spend the next six months for sure making a decision that will impact the lives of 52,000 students, 5,000 employees, and everybody in Omaha one way or another. And I genuinely believe I'm that person. Some of the things that I would like to see is, I would like us to have more opportunities to meet one-on-one or one-on-two with each other, so that as board leadership, I would have a better idea of what questions you have or what priorities you might have. Um, I would like to, uh, before we get too far down this selection path, develop our identity in a retreat, self-evaluation, committee of the whole, whatever it takes, so that we know what we're looking for before we start looking for it. So, we will know when we have found it. And I think that that's something that's really important to do. I know that there has been requests from several people for more data and information from the district, and I think that we can work with administration to see what is the vehicle for providing that kind of information. I was able to attend the data presentation on the test scores, uh, maybe three months ago. And those are the sorts of things that I think that we should, uh, see if we can participate in. The other thing is, as you know, I have been thinking about being president and talking with another member of the board, Mr. Teelin, about how to accomplish these things. What do boards look like? What are the lanes that we're in? What can we accomplish? I think you need somebody at this position who is working at it full-time. And that's me. This is my job, being on the board. You know that I put a lot of work into the policy committee, too much, some people might say. You know that I comb through the agenda before every single meeting. Even when I was in Egypt, I sent in comments about the agenda. I attend community meetings for the district, community meetings throughout the district. Sometimes I'm the only board member there. Sometimes there's another board member there, but I do that on a regular basis. Please support me with your vote and I promise to work full-time.
Erdenberger?
Head? Head? Erdenberger? Erdenberger? Smith? Smith? Erdenberger? And head? Four Erdenberger, three head, two Smith. Head? Smith? Erdenberger? 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 Head? 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 Erdenberger? Four Erdenberger, four head, one Smith. Head? Erdenberger? 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 Head? Erdenberger? Head? Head? And head? Four Erdenberger, five head?
Okay, well, according to the ballots, it appears as though Mr. Head will be the president, the next president for the Board of Education for the Omaha Public Schools. Congratulations. Okay, we will now begin with nominations for the office of vice president.
I'll self-nominate.
I'd like to nominate Nick.
Thank you, but I'm not interested. Thank you very much, Nancy.
I don't think you can deny it, okay?
Okay. Anyone, any other nominations? Okay, we have one nomination, Mr. Smith?
I don't know who we're going with. Nick won't do it, no. Tell us who were, who were the two people? He's the only one nominated.
Yeah, my mic is on, I was just waiting. So, I just wanted to ask again for your support, um, as the vice president of the board. Um, I fully support Spencer and his leadership. I think with his dynamic style and approach and, uh, my tenacity, I think we can really get some things done. Um, I look forward with continuing to be a dedicated board member and to continue to deliver for the youth in our community, the parents in our community, and the teachers in our community. Again, Dr. Holman, I would just want to say thank you for your leadership and Dr. Logan as well, and I look forward to, uh, going forward with this trajectory. Thank you.
Erdenberger?
Erdenberger is not running and will not serve. Thank you.
Smith? Teelin? Smith? 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 And a blank. Six Smith, one Erdenberger, one Teelin.
Congratulations, Mr. Smith. The next vice president for the Board of Education for Omaha Public Schools. Let the record reflect that the board meeting adjourned at 8:59 PM. Thank you, everyone.